... indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Have a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much for being at tonight's meeting. The first item on the agenda relates to citizen concerns. If there are any concerned citizens, if you please come forward and address the board by stating your name and address. Hearing none, we will move to item number four, which is approval of the agenda dated July 19, 2016.
Move it.
I'll second that. Do you have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the agenda is approved five to zero. Item five, approval of the minutes of the July 12, 2016 meeting.
Move it.
And I will second that. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the minutes are approved five to zero. Item six is the discussion and approval of the claims.
Move it.
Second.
Motion and a second on the claims, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the claims are approved five to zero. We are now coming to a set time on the public hearing and sale of property to the city of Sioux City, parcel number 444495, also known as 1509 Grandview Boulevard. And so we will go ahead and open this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the sale of this property?
Mr. Chair, move the hearing to be closed.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the public hearing is closed on a vote of five to zero. Now, is there anyone who would like to bid on the sale of this property? It is a direct sale to the city of Sioux City. So we're actually going to approve, or I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the property to the city of Sioux City.
Second.
And we have a-
For $114?
For $114. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero.
Nice addition to Rose Hill.
There you go. Item B, under Board Administration Public bidder, is to approve the resolution for the notice of property, sale for parcel number 617250.
Move to place it on the agenda for the second day of August at 4:35.
I'll second that. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item C is approval of a resolution for notice of property sale for parcel number 132525.
Move to place it on the agenda the second day of August at 4:37.
I'll second that. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item D is approval of a resolution for the notice of property sale for parcel number 062715.
Move to set the sale in hearing for August 2 at 4:39 p.m.
I'll second that. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, the motion carries five to zero. Item E is approval of a resolution for the notice of property sale for parcel number 062700.
Move to set the sale in hearing for August 2 at 4:41 p.m.
Second that, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, the motion carries five to zero. Almost sounds like we have somebody doing this full-time. We will now move to item eight, which is human resources. Ed Gilliland, this is a good news report, which we put on the back end as we had a set time, and just wanted to highlight some great professional communications that you may have seen quarterly, and to recognize Ed and his department, and I understand that you've included one of those examples in tonight's pack-up.
Tonight's packet looks like this. It kind of tries to help update everybody with what's going on in the county quarterly. We hope to gradually become more in-depth with what we cover and make sure that we keep everybody aware of what's going on.
Thank you very much. Very nicely laid out, and a lot of great information on county employees, years of service, and a lot of good health information as well.
And I'd like to thank Tanya Abel and Carla Fergan for their hard work on that.
Very good. Please thank them on our behalf. Any questions or discussion? Thank you very much, Ed. Good job.
Welcome.
Item nine is yours as well, and the first one is the approval of the memorandum of personnel transaction.
Move it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. I'm passing this around for your signatures. Item B, the approval of a retiree request to remain on dental insurance. What was it?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. And finally, the approval of a contract for new copier, saving the county money.
Thank you. The contract essentially was approximately $1,300 to $2,000 a quarter previously. The new contract with the lease and the service agreement both will be approximately $250 a month.
Is there discussion on this item?
This is for your office?
Yes, sir.
Move it.
There's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Is this one, did you already sign this contract?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so it's just a motion to receive. He signed it, and he's just notifying you.
That's the motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Ed, thank you very much. Renata, item 10, our county auditor, Patrick Hill, and the first item is A, receive the appointment of the city of Hornick council member. And this is to, and I'll make this motion, to receive the appointment of Danny Joe Davidson to the city council of Hornick.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item B is to receive the county recorder's report of fees collected. What was it?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there discussion? I hear none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Item 11, county treasurer, Mike Clayton, this is to receive the semi-annual report to the Board of Supervisors of funds in the hands of the Woodbury County Treasurer at Close the Business, June 30, 2016.
Move to receive.
Whoever didn't, go ahead and second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to receive, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion received carries five to zero. Item 12, secondary roads with Mark Nara, this is the consideration of a permit for use of the county right-of-way for an underground utility. This is for Mid-American Energy for installation of a sixth natural gas line along Port Neal Circle.
Move it.
I'll go ahead and second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. We'll now recess the Board of Supervisors meeting, and we'll convene the Upper Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting. Item 13 is approval of the minutes of the July 12, 2016 meeting.
Move it.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion?
They're coming back when? Do you know?
Pat, do you know when they plan to come back? And have they, do you have any update as to how they have filed or proceeded?
The petition is over in their quarters office right now. They have to verify that there's at least 50-plus, 50% plus one of the landowners that have petitioned this, and once I verify that, I bring the report to you next week. You have to set a, an election someplace in that district, so we need, probably need to contact their contact person to determine when and where they want to do that.
How long does that normally take, or is there statutory language as far as the earliest time the-
It's 40 and 60 days, I think is what it is.
Okay. Answer your question. Okay. All right, so we have approved those minutes at this point? And, what's that? And we will, our auditor is calling for us to call for a vote, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the minutes are approved five to zero. We will now adjourn the Upper Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting. We'll continue the Board of Supervisors meeting, and we are to item 14, Planning and Zoning Director, John Pellelo. This is to receive a final plating for deer run addition. If you don't know, that's a minor subdivision with referral to the zoning commission for public hearing and recommendation. John?
The planning zoning office has received a subdivision application and final plating from the Dale Dice Estate to take 25 acres and divide it into two lots for estate administration purposes. Obviously, his will provides that one of, each of the two lots go to beneficiaries of the estate. This is a parcel that lies about 1.2 miles northeast of Sergeant Bluff. Closest intersection is Elk Creek Road and Glen Ellen Road. It sits on the north side. We would like you to accept and refer this application and final plating to the zoning commission for public hearing. Be happy to address any inquiries.
Are there questions, inquiries, or discussion?
Move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero.
That's public hearing scheduled for next Monday. We'll bring back the results of the hearing. Take all those, anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Item 15, Building Services, and our Building Services Director, Kenny Schmitz, this is courthouse exterior facade and windows, courtroom number 203, emergency repair project update as an action item. And Kenny?
There's no courtroom 203. Emergency repair project continues forward. I received some pictures from Bogan Reef Studios of our stained glass windows that they are currently repairing. I'm happy to report that the windows that they have already repaired look fantastic. I'm excited to see those when they come back. The pictures look really, really good, so. With that said, we have some additional items and actions and motions we're asking for here today. The project will continue to reach into an extended period that was unforeseen. Originally, we came in with a, what we thought was a particular repair design. It turned out that the original schematics and prints and structural drawings incorporated a piece of plate steel that we found to actually not be present. The way the structure was assembled wasn't clear until we actually removed some of the lower windows, and we are now able to see how that assembly was made. We originally thought it was a two-piece assembly, and that we could access and make repairs from the outside of the building. Now, since we've discovered it's a one-piece assembly, our architect has advised us not to take that one piece out and to try to do repairs from the inside. Now, that requires us to remove the vertical marble along the window section on the interior side. So we've gotten calls for additional slabs of marble to make repairs with. We are anticipating that some of the marble we remove will be, we will be able to reutilize that and reuse it. Some of it may or may not be, but we'll have additional pieces available to do that. I'd welcome Terry with CMBA Architects and Shane Albrecht with the Baker Group to come up and give you some more specifics and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for an introduction, Kenny. Terry?
Yeah, Terry Glade, Cannon Mossbringer Architects. Yeah, when we went into the project, we kind of knew that there were going to be some things that we weren't going to know until we got into it, basically. Yeah, just the way it was constructed, there's been some additional work incurred by the subcontractor, Rob Seiler, that's working for the Baker Group. He's had to take out all of the lower windows. He was originally going to leave the operating windows in place. Those have also had to come out and require additional metal work done to them. They're in really, actually, pretty poor condition, and so those are being repaired. And then again, as Kenny said, the one metal piece that we thought we could take out and perform some repairs, we really can't without jeopardizing the upper window frames. The lower piece of marble that originally fell out and broke in the courtroom couldn't be reused, obviously, and the marble that we found as a replacement is a very close match, but it would visually look different enough from the other horizontal pieces in there that we felt it's better to replace all of the horizontal pieces at this time. And then, as Kenny said, the vertical pieces also have to come out because of the repairs we're doing, but we're hopeful that those can all be saved and reused. So we do have, we do have a change order that I'm bringing forward here. Was that part of your documentation you received with your information there?
Right.
So yeah, the additional work, repair work by Rob Seiler is listed on there. There's additional marble work that is being done by Habril Stone, that will be done by Habril Stone, and then some additional work on the part of Baker Group, both in management and in actually some physical work that they're going to have to do, is part of that change order. And then, not part of Baker's change order is additional time and expense on our part for having to revisit the design of the steel supports that we're going to have to put in there. And at the end of this process, we will have drawings and specifications then that can be used going forward for the other three courtrooms.
So there were supposed to be two pieces of steel in there, and there was only one?
Correct.
Shane Albrecht, Baker Group, there's a piece of flat steel that was supposed to go out and support the lower windows that's shown in all the details and stuff. That piece of metal is not there, and it was a fairly substantial piece that was welded into, welded into that I-beam. I mean, it's drawn about this thick on the plan, so I mean, half inch, three-quarter. It's a very substantial piece of metal that's not there.
So in terms of the overall project scope and dollar amount, and this, Dennis, may be a part of a question for you, the total financial impact of this is $49,596, and I'm including those three different fees. What is that doing to the overall scope of what we had originally budgeted and-
This, sorry.
Go ahead.
Maybe Dennis-
We're still well within $185,000.
Okay.
And we had some carryover from last year.
As I say, we had CIP money budgeted for 17, for the other three courtrooms, and our, when we did that, it was in case there was overages on this first one, but we did have $185 in 2016 for this.
Okay.
Any more surprises?
I hope not.
Let me ask the same question a different way. Obviously, this is something that could not have been known ahead of time before you got into it. Are there other elements or sections of this project that you just, you don't know what you don't know?
I don't, I don't believe we're, we have any more of those types of situations. I think probably the, maybe the biggest question we have yet remaining is how well that marble's going to come off.
How is that secured?
With wires and, with wires and mastic right now. Mastic is basically all that's holding the vertical and the horizontal pieces on there.
Which is basically a glue, a paste?
It's a glue, very, very much so. The vertical pieces look like they're held on by glue, and there's two wires that come up. What it looks like in the middle piece that fell is right by where the, where the seam was in the metal above, and when water got into it, it went back in there and caused that I-beam to rust. That rust caused it to pop as well as get rid of the wire that, that was holding the last piece up. The piece that fell was the, I'm sorry, the piece that fell was the fi, what we deemed to be the final piece put up. Would be, believe it was built from both edges, and the middle piece being the last piece that was installed, which is the one that fell. The middle piece was only half the thickness of the other pieces, and has twice as much mastic on it as the-
Do you believe subsequent courtroom window repairs will be this difficult, or is this kind of setting the precedent for what you believe that you'll run into in each of the subsequent rooms?
When we've talked, I mean, I think this is going to be what we're going to have to look at. I mean, I'm afraid we're going to see the same. Need to do all the lower windows to start with. We're probably going to have to take the marble down because it's the only way to really get to be able to put the metal pieces in to hold that window assembly, since we can't access it from the outside as we originally hoped to be able to do because of it not being two pieces. So the marble needs to come down, which means the, both the horizontal and the vertical face of marble have to come down in each of the supplemental courtrooms as well. So this'll, this'll be pretty much the norm, other than we won't have the, the learning curve as far as, we'll know what the, we'll know what it is going into each of the next ones.
Are there questions or discussion?
What sort of wires are we talking about that goes through the glue?
We're talking like, what you would hold up, I guess like nine-gauge galvanized wires. Yeah. Bigger than what your normal, your old metal coat hangers are, about twice that size and thickness, but that's, that's really all that's there.
When we started this project, the southeast corner was supposed to be the bad because of the heat and the sun, and so are we expecting to do the other courtrooms?
The, the other courtrooms, the southwest, you remember the, part of it was that the window, the lower bank of windows were bowing out also on the south side. The southwest corner has maybe the second most severe case of that, but it's, it's not very much compared to the southeast. And then the north, two north courtrooms are even less than that, so they're not in the, in the same drastic of a condition as the southeast courtroom. That being said, the stained glass windows themselves probably are not in that greater shape regardless, and it would not be a bad idea, and being part of the historical committee also, I guess I would also recommend that those, those windows be looked at being replaced or repaired, rebuilt soon also, just to, just to save the windows.
So there'll be a recommendation coming forward at a later date on whether to continue on with this?
Yeah.
When we took the windows out that we did at the southeast courtroom, when Bogan Reef was looking at it, the, I don't know what's the, Terry will do better with this, the zinc, so the zinc is deteriorating over time. It's with the glass piece that's trapping the heat in and stuff. The zinc is deteriorating, which is what's causing the windows to sag. So when these new windows come back in, they've added more zinc, it won't change the historical look, but they've added support bearings in that to stop the weight of the glass to bring that down. But more in-depth, the grout or whatever, the caulk that holds the stained glass to the zinc has reached its useful life. I mean, it's, it's deteriorating, it was falling out. So we actually had glass panels that were loose when they took the big tall, over the tall windows down, that were loose in your hands from just age and time. I mean, so Mark Bogan Reef, who, he said it was, it's time to, to give him a revitalization, re-glaze him, so, but that'll be a different recommendation, but that should answer your question.
Right, and I go back to the original question, that corner was supposed to be, and was, the worst.
The worst as far as the bow and the bottom, if that's correct.
Right, but did Bogan Reef look at the other windows in the other courtrooms? Or is this just, he's just going on what he's done?
He's just looking at the, he's just looking at the stained glass windows in the courtroom that he took down. We didn't take any of the other courtrooms.
Any other questions or discussion? So I would make a motion to approve the Baker Group change order number one, dated July 13, 2016, Cannon Mossbringer fee extension proposal dated July 12, 2016, and the funds to extend the 60-foot high lift equipment rental with beer-
We have all those separate motions.
Sure. So I would make the first motion to approve the Baker Group change order number one dated July 13, 2016.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. I'd move to approve the CMBA fee extension proposal dated July 12, 2016.
Move it. Second.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. And I'd make a motion to approve the funds to extend the 60-foot high lift equipment rental with beer bash. Did I say that right? Beer's bash. Thank you. That one. Equipment. If I can entertain a second.
Second. Would it be cheaper to buy one?
We talked about that.
And the answer was?
The initial expense to buy a used one was in the $6,000, $7,000.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Gentlemen, thank you for your work. And I appreciate also keeping the historical committee up to date. I understand you have some need of a couple of supervisors on the 100th anniversary, and Supervisor Smith and I, as well as updating the committee as a whole as to what is happening, so much appreciated on both of those lines. All right, very good. We are to item number 16 with the county sheriff, Dave Drew, and item A is to receive two statements of unadjudicated condemnation funds now being held by the Woodbury County Sheriff's Office.
Do them both same time?
I will defer to the auditor.
Two separate motions.
He would like two separate motions.
Move the first one that has no money in it.
I'll second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero.
Move on the $11,100 unadjudicated funds.
And Supervisor Smith seconds that. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero. Where do item 16B, which is to present a proposal for medical services in the jail, this is a topic of great interest to the board, and we appreciate you being here, Sheriff, to present it.
Yeah, two people from the Midwest Correctional Medical Group to submit a proposal on their services, similar to ACH, and maybe have a few other things that they could add to this. So we would have ACH, now Midwest Correctional Medical Group, and we've asked Mercy a few months ago, and we're still waiting, but I think they have a lot of great information, and it's their time to share.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. So can I have some of the-
So can I have some of the proposals, can I hand them out now or?
Send them out now and we'll send them on down the line.
Thank you.
I think we've got these.
And you may have done, but would you state your name for us if you have?
So I'm Casey Roat, I'm the Director of Business Development for Midwest Correctional Medical.
And I'm Victor Hutchinson, Director of Operations for Midwest Correctional.
So if it's okay, what I wanted to do is just give you some brief background of the company and then let Victor kind of cover some of the staffing that was proposed.
Sure.
So the company actually has 53 counties and 94 facilities currently. Um, it was founded 32 years ago in California and has expanded since then. And so in April of this year, um, we just expanded Midwest Correctional Medical Group Companies. Some things you'll find throughout our proposal once you review it and look at making a decision is that Midwest Correctional Medical Group is known to hire and keep good people and they're correctionally based. So, um, you know, we'd want to keep everything onsite and reduce any cost for you. Um, it allows us to offer a quality program and have a lot less turnover with staffing moving forward. We do offer a full staffing, so no shift is left uncovered. So the jail will always have someone there onsite to be able to deliver their service. We believe it offers a lower cost over the long term, so we'll reduce transports to the hospital, reduce expenditures, provide full indemnification for the sheriff, and also reducing the risk for the county. We're experts in maintaining standards in our accreditations. And one thing with this company is that 100% of our customers are references. So of the 53 counties that we service and 94 facilities, every single one of them is gonna be a reference for us. Over 32 years, we've only lost seven customers, six of them are back with us. So one there just hasn't been enough time yet to get them back. We did propose from ACH's proposal, you'll see ours will have enhanced staffing, so we did increase the staffing because we felt that that was necessary within the size and scope of work for the facility. And with that said, I'm kinda gonna let Victor go over the staffing aspect of it.
Sure, thank you. So we did increase, as you'll see in there, the staffing went up to 8.85 FTEs, which shows an increase of additional nursing staff. It'll show an increase of the medical health provider as well as a mental health clinician. And of course, we, we provide the indemnification. And, and, and we, we anticipate coming in and we would, we would, of course, as Casey mentioned, try to remain, keep everything onsite without a lot of offsite, you know, offsite costs, and to try to, um, lower the costs as best as we can. Uh, we also have programs that we use, web-based programs, to, to help in that process by, um, having referrals to our CMO as well to, um, other specialists for any immediate needs that we have onsite to reduce those offsites. So we wanted to come and provide the information. We also provide, um, of course, along with the, um, indemnification, we will have training, local support with, um, Casey being in, um, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. So we're really close in a, um, we provide a, a very strong program as the 33 years represents.
We did, when we put their cost proposal together, we obtained a lot of information over historical data. And so the price that you're seeing is the price it would be. We wouldn't come back and say that we need to increase something or have different, um, staffing options because we did all the research upfront.
And so the annual rate that you're referencing is on page 75 in the cost proposal summary, is that, are we looking at the right?
That's correct.
So 1,322,0321?
That's correct, yes.
Have you seen ACH's proposal as far as what they have offered the county? I don't know if that's a fair question, but I thought I'd ask it.
We would know, I've not seen it, no.
Okay.
As far as the, the proposal or the, the cost.
And then my follow-on question to that is, you're familiar with their company and the fact that they have approached Woodbury County? Is there differentiation that, I mean, you mentioned enhanced staffing. Is there anything else that you feel in a spirit of competition sets your group apart, over and above what they would offer or what makes you different or better? If you were in our shoes and you were just trying to weigh and?
Absolutely, great question. And we understand cost is always gonna be a huge issue, absolutely. You know, coming in and, you know, when, when I build, when I come in and see a facility, staffing is huge. I, I, you know, I'm not gonna come and try to lowball, I wanna make sure we have appropriate personnel to manage what needs to be done. I look at the whole comprehensive aspect of it, whether it's medications, nurses. What you see, what you, what you have here is the 1.3 million is what it is. I'm not gonna come back in six months and say, oh, I had to add another two staff, and I'm sorry, here's another 200,000. We will not do that. If we have to use agency, which we have a strong, we have a strong recruiting process, so we're gonna be going out there and trying to find the highest qualified person to take care of it. We have corporate support, we do teleservices, tele, tele psych, tele med, so all that will be encompassed in this.
And you feel like that's something maybe that some others, I won't reference ACH, but others may not do to as great a degree, is that?
You know, there, there's a lot of other things like Arista MD, as I mentioned, that we do from back support to keep most people on. You know, and training's gonna be huge. I think having onsite capabilities, uh, being able to monitor our referral system to keep people onsite versus offsite. Sure, we're gonna have those ER visits, it's gonna be taken care of, it has to be. But everything else, I think we're gonna be able to monitor and, um, through our referral process and through our CMOs to, to be able to better manage that, yes.
Other questions, discussion of the, the board? How many people do you lose? And that's a statistic that you have correct as far as, and it's a reality. I mean, no one has a, even under the best of medical circumstances, a, a 100%. Do you have any kind of ratio or rates of this is?
Great question. I don't know if you wanna answer that?
Typically, if you're looking at other companies and then we're looking at turnover rates.
Right, turnover rates, that's correct.
They're around, we're seeing it as high as even 45, 50% with some other companies more recently. We are less than 10% because what we'll do is come in and survey the area. We're gonna make sure that we pay our, our people accordingly to, so that they don't say, okay, I'm not gonna work at a jail, I'm gonna go down to the hospital and I can make more money there, and I'm not in jail. So, so we do tend to pay significantly higher than our companies should.
You asked, uh, you answered a great question. I, I'm sorry, I didn't phrase mine very well. When I met, how many people do you lose? How many patients do you, are you, I'm sorry, that was my fault.
No, 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 no.
So how many, under your care, would you lose in the sense of passed away under your medical care? Is there?
As a whole, I, I don't know the percentage of it.
Okay.
I would defer and get that information back to you.
That's fine.
It's very minimal, we have a significant detox program as well. And I mentioned a significant, uh, mental health program that we bring in. So I'd, I'd have to defer and get that specific information back to you, so I apologize.
Well, that's, that's fine, if you follow up with that, that's very helpful, so, thank you.
You, you have a significant detox program?
When I mean, when I mean significant detox program, we, we revised our, our withdrawal policy and procedures. So we, we come in and we, we have them specifically for the alcohol, methadone, opiate, all those programs, of course, that we will bring in and train. So that, we, we look to, we revise that all the time to, to improve on, on those programs. So that's what I mean by significant.
Yeah.
We really, and it's very important, because you get those in all the time, it's very important to monitor those closely. Meds, biosigns, everything. So those are really crucial aspects of it. Suicide is, I'm sorry.
You train your staff on it or the jail staff?
Absolutely, we also do training for the jail staff as well, but we train our staff when they come in. We also train our staff on, on what to look for as far as what we keep onsite and make sure we're, we're looking our best for the resonations as well as the county, the sheriff's office.
And your proposal has how many staff that you estimated? Did you, 8.85?
Yes, sir. And that's an increase, um, that, that provides 24 hours a week of mental health services. That provides a, a, a mid-level there, six hours a week, a doctor there, four hours a week, and psychiatrists mid-level there, four hours a week. I think they currently do three hours, I believe, and of course, additional nursing to support the 24/7.
So is this replacing our current services, adding to it? How do you guys see this?
Yes, sir. We would replace it, yeah.
Be in lieu of Mercy. Dennis, what do we have normally budgeted right now? Do you know off the top of your head?
There was about $750.
Okay. 1.1?
1.1.
And what is, what was budgeted?
Budgeted 675.
And your current expenses are 1.1 up to date?
Does that include medical or pharmacy?
That's everything.
Do you know what pharmacy breaks out?
About 12,000 a month.
A month?
And you alluded to pharmaceuticals or not, I'm sorry. Do you include the pharmaceuticals within your contract?
I don't, I don't think.
Not in the 1.322. Because we'll stay local with drilling, however, if we need to take a look at that, we can certainly do that. We typically work with a different pharmacy.
So we would potentially, just so everybody's clear, go to the 1.322 plus the 144,000 in pharmaceuticals, 12,000 a month times 12, roughly.
Yes, whoever you pick, that's gonna be the additional cost, either with Mercy or any individual.
Right, we're just trying to figure out the total, so we're looking at about 1.5 now. And you're gonna spend 1.1 this year?
And does that include emergency hospitalization and the whole gamut? Okay. Other questions or discussion for these folks?
Just did increase the staff, their staff compared to what it is.
What is it right now, can you remind us?
We, we have five and Mercy is hiring one more full-time person, so it'll go to six. So, and we see that, and we'll see that increase in our medical also.
Because you'll be charged back from Mercy for that individual FD.
Can I, I have one more question.
Can I, can we have them come up and, and you ask? Thank you very much, and if there are additional questions, we'll ask you to come back if that's all right. But just so people, the thousands listening at home can hear this. Okay, thank you. Major Stallman, Supervisor Smith?
Okay, it seems to me, I heard something, um, about maybe trying to find out if hospital services weren't covered under Medicaid. Have we made any progress on that or?
When that dis, when that discussion gets done, what it is is, um, people would like us to help sign up inmates, but while you're incarcerated in a correctional facility, there's, your insurance, no one's insurance covers you.
Right.
There's no way. What it does is, once the individual gets out, if they continue with medical services, now they're insured.
But not if they're incarcerated and they have to take a trip to the hospital?
We put the taxpayers pay for that.
Here's my question, we've had ACH, um, and we, obviously we have Mercy and now MWCMG. Is there a recommendation on the part of the sheriff's office? Is there a desire to study three proposals? I mean, I'm very appreciative because competition is a great thing, both in terms of quality and in terms of the price. And I think this is a good thing that's happening, but do you have a recommendation for us as a board going forward? Or would you like to study this?
Mercy's proposal yet, and so until we get Mercy's proposal, I, we wouldn't have a recommendation. I believe the sheriff is only gonna probably give this about two more weeks, 'cause it's, it's been a long time, I think.
And then will you come back before our board and say, we've, we've studied all three of these side by side and we feel most comfortable with, whoever, whoever it may be?
Do, I appreciate all the work that goes into something like this. Do you have a professional to ladies' proposal side by side? Or do you feel, you know, confident that you can do that with existing staff?
I think my, I, I think we're com- competent enough to be able to take a look at the proposals and determine which one best fits the needs of Woodbury County. And we also use the nurse supervisor at the jail has sat in on the meetings or whatever we've done with ACH and with Midwest, we bring her right with us, uh, so she can also say, you know, on there. So, no, I, I think we'd be pretty good at being able to say, um, there's some, there's some differences in the contract you have to look at, like ACH, they have $190,000 is what you're gonna put into their contract. But if you exceed $190,000, that contract goes up. You, if you, their, their selling point, as they say to you, it's 190,000. Well, if you don't spend 190,000, you get that back. Well, I promise you, we'll spend 190,000. So is that number accurate? I believe yours is closer to 250, if I'm not incorrect. And that's probably a more accurate number that you would see. Mercy is, um, as we're seeing with Mercy, they have been increasing their staff. We did get the, um, mental health doctor for another hour, um, so that, that's helped a little. But we're like, when you're under a contract, when the physician doesn't show up, we just go without a physician. And so physicians are like anyone else. They take vacations and kids get sick and they don't come in. And that's a, that, that week, we'll see an increase in the number of inmates that we have to take to the hospital because the physician didn't come in. And with this, you're gonna have a physician that comes in.
Because there'll be traveling physicians that cover, or how do you, I mean?
I'll defer to them on how they?
A host of doctors around to take over when?
That, that's, yes, ma'am, that is correct. So if there, if something happens to our doctor, we would either go to a tele services, tele med services, or bring in another local provider or a provider with now a license to take care of these.
In tele med services, we do not have at this time, and I believe that is part of the contract.
Yes, it is.
You get that, and we don't have that right now. You do tele psych and tele meds.
I think the challenge, and if you all can help us with this, is going to be laying it down and, uh, you know, here are the three things, and we're just looking at the total bottom line cost and services for, you know, that'll take, I think, the work to be able to help us to understand.
ACH and Midwest? I've started with Midwest and ACH is, I've, I've read 100 times, so I'm very familiar. But we need that third one from Mercy to be able to really take a look at it. Then come back and say.
I think the, uh, couple of things that probably interest the county on ACH and Midwest is they indemnify the county and the sheriff, that's always nice. And the other thing is they're adding the mental health services. Right now, we're lucky to get three hours, and if he doesn't make it, they're on luck, so.
And this one's four hours?
There's, there's 24 hours of clinician help, professional clinician and four hours of, of a provider.
So you don't have the 24 hours now of the clinician help, that's additional?
No, so those are big, because that, we had an incident last week, he didn't make it, so that's never very good. I, I think that they're probably accurate in the eight, obviously looking at, they went by ACA standards, and that's, uh, that's important. But I, I think after we get all three proposals, I'd like Joshua, I know he's always busy, but the three of us could all sit down together and, uh, kinda look it over and go over the string and bring it back to the board and kinda let you know where we're at with Joshua's office review and all, so I think it's the best way to do it.
That'd be great.
And you've got, Ed, that was his field of expertise up to the years.
Yes, yeah, I didn't mean to exclude Ed, 'cause he does know a ton on that.
I mean, he told me the other day he was looking for something to do.
Yeah. Yeah, like he wants more, he's hoping that I do, but yeah, we would use.
That's, that's a good point. That's, that's a good point. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you, folks, for being here tonight. Appreciate your presentation. We're to item 17, Rural Economic Development Director David Gleiser. This is a Sulan Chamber of Commerce annual dinner.
Thank you, David Gleiser, Rural Economic Development Director, here tonight to have a discussion and request that the board take action on a proposed recommendation about the upcoming Sulan Chamber of Commerce annual dinner. You're all familiar with the organization, tri-state area business advocacy organization. The annual chamber dinner will be held this September, Thursday, 22. And it will feature Minnesota Supreme Court Justice Alan Page, who will provide a personal perspective on athletics law and race relations in America today. If you're not familiar with Justice Page, he was a high school football standout from Ohio, standout player at Notre Dame, and first round draft pick for NFL Minnesota Vikings. While he played for the Minnesota Vikings, he studied law, which culminated in his becoming the first African American to serve on the Minnesota State Supreme Court. In years past, the Woodbury County has secured a table for elected officials and staff interested in attending, with the stipulation that if spouses attend, they reimburse the county for the rate of the seat. It's be my recommendation that we get a table, one, no more than two, at general admission cost, which is $800 for a table of 10. And see if you have any recommendation on potential attendees.
So would your staff recommendation be to get up to, two tables, and then based on those who show interest in attending, fill either one or two?
Yes.
What's the will of the board, or is there subsequent discussion?
I plan to attend, one way or the other.
I do as well.
Me too.
I use the same argument I used last year. If you want to go to dinner, I don't care whether it's with the chamber or who else, pay for your own. I don't think the county is in the business for buying meals for, for people that work here.
Any other discussion? Supervisor Smith, I see that look in your eye like you would like to say something.
I don't, I don't know how to respond to that, Larry, but it's more than just a meal. So we are trying to establish a relationship. I'm going to move it.
As, as a chamber investor, we are encouraged to attend their various networking opportunities. And the chamber's annual dinner is not only a valuable networking opportunity, but it's also a critical tool to raise the financial support that they need to effectively run the organization and advocate for businesses in the area. So other local governments do attend. Some participate at the sponsorship level, but it'd be my recommendation that we would at least have a presence with the general admission table.
So the motion is for up to two tables based on availability. I will second that. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
And the motion carries four to one. Thank you very much.
Two seats.
Thank you very much. We're to item 18, Board Administration. Our Budget and Tax Analyst, Dennis Butler. This is approval of our resolution to set the date for the hearing on issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue bond. Dennis?
Good to see you. Thank you. Glad to be back.
Good.
This is a single bond issue. It does cover three different projects. One is called the Dogwood Trail Improvement for $801,000. It's actually a loan to Sergeant Bluff, which will eventually be paid back by Sergeant Bluff through our TIF increment policy. It was adopted. We did sign a development agreement back, clear back in May, I believe, or April. The final cost CF Road Main Entrance is $159,000. The balance of that was for the RISE grant. And Senator Rose did cover that because we had a federal deal we had to sign. So $159,000 there, and the reconstruction of Port Neal Circle Road is $750,000 for a total of $1,710,000. This is just saying a date for next Tuesday at 4:40 PM to have the official public hearing so we can get the money to the proper people.
Is there a motion?
Move it.
I will second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Item 19, Chairman's Report. Item A is the LEC Expansion Committee Initial Update. We had a good committee meeting today, one in which I believe will be the final, as a recommendation will be coming forth for next week regarding an informational item, and will show statements of probable cost under a bonding threshold of $1.2 million, as well as a schematic design. And we will work to see how much of that can be shown as there are certain security issues, and we'll work through those. And also, I hope to provide backup. I think I'm at approximately 60 pages of how much has been studied through this committee that I'm very appreciative of, from the sheriff's office to the TRC and so on. So just wanted to give the, the board as a whole an update that that will be forthcoming. Any questions or discussion along those lines?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Were there three board members at that meeting?
There were. It was an open meeting and it was published.
It was not published as a board meeting?
It does not need to be. An open meeting can be attended by more than two supervisors.
Could you explain the difference in the Sioux Rivers region meeting and this?
Sure. So this meeting was a meeting posted and published by the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors, and it was attended by a third party, Supervisor Ung, who did not comment or act as a committee member, nor did he report back. And it was done under the advice of our auditor, Pat Gill. Is that correct? Auditor Gill, I saw that look in your eye like you'd like to weigh in on the issue as well.
Yes, the question was brought to me. It was right before the meeting started. I asked if we could get a hold of Joshua, but everybody was right there. I will say that the advice was consistent, is that I told him that best practice is that it should have been published as a meeting of the Board of Supervisors, special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. But it was a committee meeting that was published, and the media was in attendance. And I advised Mr. Ung if he was going to, to attend the meeting, is that he should not participate and he should not report out. That is what the extent of the discussion was. Afterwards, we discussed it with Joshua, and he makes the distinction that the Sulan Rivers meeting, it's kind of a gray area whether or not that included Board of Supervisors information that could be construed as a Board of Supervisors meeting from Woodbury County. I did not make that distinction, and I apologize for that. But that is, is that, the difference that I recall, the discussion about the meeting that took place up at Sioux Rivers, is that it was my understanding that Mr. Clausen was invited to it and participated. He says he did not participate. He said that he was, he attended as a citizen. But when he came back to this board, he did report out as a board member, and I believe that's what my difference of opinion was. And if I'm wrong in that, I apologize to Mr. Clausen for that, and Mr. Ung for giving bad advice.
If I could weigh in here, it's not something that I was asked about prior to the meeting. I think if we know that there's going to be three supervisors in attendance somewhere, the safest thing to do is just publish it as a meeting, and we don't get into discussions about this. It would be a similar analysis as to the analysis of, of Mr. Clausen going to the Sioux Rivers meeting. It is kind of a gray area in the sense that there's not, there hasn't been a case or a decision of the Public Information Board that's, you know, exactly like this set of facts. But at the same time, three supervisors couldn't go to lunch, and only two of them talk, and one just sit there. And that wouldn't be okay if they're discussing county business. So I think going forward, if we know three supervisors are going to be somewhere, then it should be something that's posted as an agenda of the Board of Supervisors.
And then, and just for the public's clarity, it was published, and it was posted as an agenda. But you're saying with the distinction that it's a Board of Supervisors meeting, rather than, because when we've talked about whether it's the LEC Expansion Committee or the Rural Economic Development Committee being published as open meetings, I just want to make sure that the public knows that they were properly identified
Right.
as open meetings, at the very least, even though I appreciate the distinction that, that could.
The purpose and intent of open meetings is that, you know, decisions are made in the public eye. And that's certainly, this was a public meeting, and everything that was talked about was open to the public. So there's certainly no, I don't see any intent to violate the open meetings law. And as far as I know, the same list of people are notified for the LEC committee meeting as are notified for the Board of Supervisors meeting. So it would just be something of adding an additional line of the supervisors potentially being there. But I'm not saying that it's a clear violation or anything like that. It's just, we can be more careful about it and deal with it proactively rather than after the fact.
So would it not necessarily be a clear violation of either Supervisor Clausen or myself wanted to attend a region meeting? Are you saying then, since it's a gray area, that as long as we didn't participate, because that's a posted meeting as well?
Right, well.
And it just seems like it's, depends on which supervisor gets, I mean, it seems like two sets of rules to me.
And, and if a supervisor asks our office for advice in dealing with the situation, our advice would be not to go to the meeting if it's not posted, because the potential exists for an open meeting violation. You're putting yourself in that position as well as the other members.
But if we don't ask, then, which is what happened today. You weren't asked, so.
Right.
So the meeting today, then, was a violation of the open meetings law?
Well.
Potentially.
I'm not ready to say that.
It was a, it was a published, open.
I want the attorney's opinion.
And there's a meeting, I mean, there was a meeting that you attended, Larry, up at Sioux Rivers, similar sort of thing where you didn't say anything, is my understanding. You came back and, and talked at this meeting about what was said. But, so I'm not saying that what you did was a clear violation, or what, what happened today was either, I just think, you know, going forward, we can be more careful in navigating these issues.
So the clarity will be if, and, and we have, under the advice of the Iowa Freedom of Information Board, we have taken steps on committee meetings in which there were only two attending to publish them as posted meetings and open meetings. So my anticipation today was that it would be Supervisor Monson and myself. But we've tried to go to that extra step, because we've learned that that is still an open meeting, even if there are just two of us. And so if adding Board of Supervisors to the agenda for the Rural Economic Development Committee, or for any committee, is necessary, I'll gladly do so. Because the steps that were taken were in order to comply with open meetings, open records. So anytime any committee meets, I will publish that as a Board of Supervisors meeting, is the advice that I'm hearing. Because otherwise, the potential, or if it's known, which I had not 24 hours in advance, that Supervisor Ung would be in attendance.
I would hope that if it's something that's not posted as a Board of Supervisors, that a third member of the supervisors wouldn't put the other supervisors in that position. Because technically, if you have a, a meeting of the Board of Supervisors, then Pat's supposed to be there to take minutes. So I don't think you necessarily cure it by just posting everything as a Board of Supervisors meetings. But if you know you're going to have a quorum, then yes, post it as a meeting.
Mr. Chairman, the, the issue of posting it as a potential special meeting of the board, I feel like we've talked about that before.
All right, I thought we had as well.
I remember Supervisor Smith bringing up a request that each committee meeting of a certain committee, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought it was this one? Or was it another one that you desired all the board to be kept abreast of?
Rural Economic Development Committee.
Okay. So my assumption was that was for every committee and?
If it's clear, if it's, if it's clear to put on for every committee meeting in which we think that there will be, the potential of three people attending, even though they're already posted as public meetings, even though Pat's already there, to put on that it's the full board, I will do so out of an abundance of caution. My only request would be that we have committee work by which we've designated certain liaisons or individuals. And I think in order for this to, to function in the spirit of good government, that those, as happened today, Supervisor Monson and I made comments and had deliberations, Supervisor Ung did not. And I believe that that's the best, best practice. Otherwise, we could be doing all the committee work here all day long, and I don't know if that's really the purpose of committee work.
So what I'm trying to establish here some way is apparently Mr. Ung had an interest in that committee work.
Actually, I had an hour to kill today, and.
It was unanticipated, but you're right.
So, so you went to the meeting?
Yes, as a visitor. I signed the sign-in sheet as a visitor.
All right. I did the same thing at Sioux Rivers.
But you reported back, and I did not.
I don't know what you'd call reporting back.
And it wasn't an open meeting of the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors? It wasn't, it wasn't posted by us, correct?
Right. So what I'm asking now is if I intend to go to Sioux Rivers region meeting, is the chairman going to post that? I have a, a great interest in it.
I know you do. I would say that under the, I would defer to our, our legal advice. If I, if it's necessary for me to, to post the meeting in order to allow for other supervisors to go, I will tell you that I've had trepidation, because I do not believe it serves this board to have the entire county board go up and engage in deliberation as five, when it's clear that there are differences of opinion.
We're not talking about engaging in deliberations. We're talking about attending a meeting the same as Mr. Ung did today.
Would you like some time to think about that, Joshua?
Well.
Well, it's the same principle to me, right?
It, it is something that I could look into. I, I think when it comes down to it as far as whether to post a meeting of the board, the chair would have some discretion in that. I mean, the, the legal part of it, as far as if, I, I wouldn't advise a, a third supervisor to go if it's not posted, because I think you have the potential there. But whether it's appropriate for them to go, or whether they have an official role there is more of an issue between the board members.
So it's at the discretion of the chair?
Correct.
No, it's not fair. I'd like a definitive answer. I'd like to know if we're playing by two sets of rules here.
I, I don't think we are, because I think if we post something in-house, it's much different than posting a three-county board region and having.
It's a meeting, it's a meeting, it's a meeting. So I don't care about all the parameters you're talking about now.
Those are kind of important in my estimation.
Talking about whether a person can go and attend and listen to deliberations.
I think the bylaws also spell out when a special meeting could, you'd have to look at that. And that is, there's a different step there.
We'll get back to you.
When?
Next week. You can hold me to it.
I will.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are to item 19B, Pearson Town Hall Meeting, originally for July 21. They've requested July 28 at 6:30. I understand. I've tried to juggle all schedules, and I understand there's one or two that, actually two now, that we have four. But I've tried very hard to, to accommodate everyone's schedule. So I apologize on this one that, but we are trying to get out everywhere we can. So, and if that changes, we'll, I'll come back to the drawing board, so.
There'll be three of you there, though. Larry, you're not going to that, are you?
I'm sorry. July 28? July 28th.
Or the Pearson Meeting?
I don't know that I can make it.
Right.
If you can't make it, well, here's, here's kind of been my standard. We've had three different issues where one person hasn't been able to make it, and if we waited for everyone, then we probably wouldn't get it on, but if there's only three of us, then I would, I would come back to the drawing board, because, so if you can't make it, then I'll-
All of us can't make everything.
Right.
So, there's always going to be somebody that's got a problem, and-
I don't have a problem with that, I just want you to know there's just going to be three of you going on.
Well, I will, we'll see what we can do. Right now, it's July 28th, and if they, if they're insistent, we'll, we'll let everyone know, so. Thanks for your understanding. Along those lines, item 20 is reports on committee meetings.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday Supervisor Munson and I attended Sioux Rivers Monthly Meeting. Of particular interest is an action item regarding the mental health billing in Woodbury County, and the appointment of a mediation committee. It was passed two to one, Woodbury opposed, to establish a mediation committee made up of two named supervisors with the region, and they would like two supervisors from Woodbury County. Also included in the motion was that presumably from the date of the motion, if consensus is not reached in two weeks, that the region proceed with judicial action. So, we're almost a week away from getting sued, apparently.
Is that on the tri-view?
Yes.
Okay.
Woodbury County voted no, not because we oppose mediation, but because the mediation motion, number one, did not include a mediator, just four people from the Board going into another room and talking about the same thing, and because it included litigation of the region against the county, and it's not really a motion that we would support, anyway. I feel like if we're going to go into mediation, it does need to follow the 208E, which Woodbury County has sought to do at every turn, which stipulates that a mediator would, a third-party mediator would be chosen according to, I believe, Code 679C. That was not supplied in the motion, and so if we're going to move ahead, we might as well supply that, because it doesn't look like that's going to come from the region. The main issue of the mediation was the sole topic of rent to be paid to the region for Veterans Affairs space. They are unhappy with the $1 we approved, but they did not give any sort of figure that they would be happy with, and they are aware that motions to the effect of $2,400, and I believe $1,600, perhaps $1,000, died for lack of a second. So, I'm not really sure what they want. I don't know if Supervisor Munson has any more knowledge on that than I do, but we, we know they want something, they, we just don't know what it is.
I think they want control of the building.
So, I-
So, are you going forward with mediation, even though it's two to one? Does that mean it goes forward anyway?
I have asked for some legal counsel in this area to see what the 208E provides for. Typically, I think Supervisor Ung alluded to, a mediator is chosen. Both sides either come up to some sort of agreement, or one side appoints, and the other side has their appointee, and they come up with a third party. We don't have those details, so I'll look for those details and assume that this would come back before the Board, should we have details that fall in line with acceptable mediation practices. And then I think it's up to this Board to take some sort of action as early as next week, potentially. So, any other thoughts or committee meetings to report?
I went to a group this morning called the Program Committee. It's arranged through Lisa McNeil, and basically, it's all of the deferment programs that are out there for folks that are in legal issues. Those being Family Treatment Court, they have about 25 people in that. Project Compass, which comes through the Mental Health Court, they have about 40, 45 folks in that. Drug Court, 60 to 80. Veterans Treatment Court is coming along, they have nine folks and growing. The Iowa Domestic Abuse Program, they're desperately working to get some funding to work with that population. The Child Support Recovery Program is funded through state or federal, I don't know, but they work with offenders to reduce what they owe when they get out of jail. The issue is if they have child support that's just huge, they're going back to jail. So, these folks are trying to work with those people that are incarcerated to get that bill down to where, when they get out of jail, they can manage that. The other one is the Iowa Workforce Development, and this is a pretty nifty program. Felon offenders, usually through the judge, are sent to Iowa Workforce Development, and they are trained, and the gal that spoke this morning, pretty direct, she says, "I tell them, it's not my problem. If you don't follow through, you get to visit with the judge again." And he has a couple options, and one of them is you're going back to prison, so it's good discussion. Major Stallman was there this morning. Did I miss anything? A lot of discussion about 24/7, trying to get that in. There's a lot of good deferment programs, just a matter of, we've got to get them to happen. Went to E911, and they authorized the submission of the Iowa Wireless Grant Application in the amount of $200,000, and that would be to relieve the cost of the city and the county and Sergeant Bluff to the extent of $200,000 for what they've already done in terms of radios. Thought that was pretty cool. The landfill meeting, interesting. They're in a position where they're either going to have to buy about 19 acres, or this guy, these two gentlemen are going to nail the landfill for a lot of money to have three wells on that property. So, there's some investigation being done to try to resolve how we might move forward to get that ground. Glenn and Wendy will be taking over Starcom from Gary Brown, and will manage that program from here on. That's all I got.
Was that unanimous, Mark?
Yes.
Very good. Any other committee meetings? Citizen Concerns, are there any concerned citizens who would like to approach the Board? Hearing none, are there Board concerns? Hearing none?
Oh, I don't have a concern, but Matthew and I went through the Treasurer's Office pretty nice. I didn't realize that was that big a space. But there, I love the cross-training stuff they're talking about, it's fantastic.
Very good. We are going to recess. We have an auditor concern?
I just wanted to let you know that Jean Jessen has been here for 30 years, and she has submitted her resignation effective-
Boy, are you in trouble.
That's why it's a concern.
Well, we're going to go ahead and recess the Board of Supervisors' meeting, so that the supervisors can go upstairs for two close sessions, under Iowa Code Section 1.51C, and we are standing recessed.
Two minutes.
Okay.
Just the process of the expansion, what's that called?
It'll come back before the Board, as an information item on Tuesday, and then-
Next Tuesday.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much. Malice, by the way, over the journal.
Oh, okay. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. All right.
It's okay.